Good evening. This May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four city council meeting is hereby called to order. The time is seven oh one P M. Please join me as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano's absent.
Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Present.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum. First order of business is to approve minutes from a previous meeting are May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty four Committee of the Hall. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you Alderman Kohler for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it and those minutes are approved. We will begin this city council meeting with a discussion, uh, which is a continuation from our Committee of the Hall last week regarding the review of the tobacco vape and CBD shop regulations. And to that, I will defer to Assistant City Manager, uh, Community Development Director Glenn Cole.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, as, uh, Mayor Sanoyka just stated, this was originally scheduled for discussion at the Committee of the Hall meeting last week. It was continued to this week for timing reasons. Our discussion tonight on this topic is not due to any specific incident, but just as we're coming up on the one year anniversary of having these regulations in effect, we wanted to give the council a brief review, um, some observations, um, you know, a chance to provide us any additional direction on this policy. During this time, one, um, specialty shop will be called really these principally tobacco vape CBD retailers, um, has closed. No new shops have opened. Um, there's been a minimal need for enforcement action. I will state transparently that the, um, city's police department did do like an underage enforcement, um, you know, sweep through the city here a few weeks ago. One of these establishments did not pass that, um, check and was cited, um, again, not ordinarily something that would, um, lead to the city council's attention. That'll still be dealt with for usual, um, fine and adjudication process. So in two thousand and twenty-three, the city council really created three, um, license types in this hybrid of what we would call traditional tobacco regulations and then regulations really directed more to vape than CBD shops. Really industrial hemp is how the state statute classifies it, right? So all these things that come by growing, um, hemp products, which are essentially unregulated in Illinois. There's an accessory retailer. So these are folks that are really spending less than ten percent of their floor area on these products. That can be a lot of different types of retailers. That can be gas stations selling cigarettes. That can be, well, actually I should say accessory retailers really just for tobacco is where we will license them, but anyone under ten percent really falls out of the purview of these regulations. So if you're Walgreens and you sell CBD creams, you're, you're not caught up in this. Um, when you get to this definition of a, a specialty shop, that's where you're really getting into the, the used to be seven, now six establishments in the city that are primarily operating as smoke shops, um, vape shops, CBD shops, things of that nature. Um, the one that was in town, um, that closed, kind of closed of its own volition, um, really hasn't been a whole lot of interest in opening new ones that at least has made it past the initial inquiry phase after these regulations were adopted. The last category started at zero, remains at zero, which we'll talk about in a little bit, which is this idea of a smoking lounge. And that's just the idea of a onsite place to consume tobacco or these products. So like a cigar shop or a hookah lounge or anything like that. These licensing regulations also introduced a few, uh, I think relatively, so first on the licensing side, the licensing cap. This works similarly to liquor licenses, right? So establishments are allowed but licensed. There's background checks for licensees. There's a cap on the number of licenses and the city council controls how high that cap is. So essentially you're really considering on an individual basis, new establishments that would be coming to the city. There are some distance limits that apply unless they're waived and also at the direction of the city council, um, they would need to go through a special use permit process as well before, um, receiving a license or being able to open a new establishment. Um, on the operating side, some simple regulations. They need to keep data on their sales. Um, probably the one that had a little bit of enforcement action targeted to it without too much difficulty, but not having exterior product displays, not having like show windows with, um, pipes or tobacco products or things like that. There's limitations on what we can do with the content of signage, but you can keep them from showing the products at least. And, uh, but, and for that reason, uh, these are, these establishments have the same signage limitation as, as other businesses. The staff memo really highlights four issues that we wanted to, um, raise to your attention and potentially get direction on. Uh, briefly, the first is smoking lounges. It seems by, you know, inserting this idea of a smoking lounge that there, there may be some interest in the city council in allowing one to open in the city. Right now, we have at least one operator that's asked about a few different sites about opening one, a hookah establishment specifically. It, it looks like the regulations that are in place really would make this a very extended process for that business to open, probably extended enough that it wouldn't be realistic. So if that is not the council's desired outcome, you should discuss that. Um, the second is since we've adopted these regulations here in the city, um, there've been a nu- number of other, um, communities that have looked at, um, banning specific substances. So there's, um, Delta eight or Delta nine THC, which again, we treat as industrial hemp product. There's been some efforts at the, in Springfield to regulate it. Those don't look like they're going anywhere. At the moment, could come back with a fall session. That can also be a different substance called, um, kratom or, or yeah, different substance called tianapine or tiantapine. Don't know the pronunciation. Um, but these are just things that other municipalities in the area have discussed, um, you know, banning the sale of within their communities. Again, we, we don't give you a recommendation on that. We share that for your information. Uh, the third is really administrative. We believe the city council's intent in putting these regulations in place was to do background checks for, um, specialty shops. So just those six freestanding establishments. Um, the way the code was written and adopted, it applies that to all of these licensees, which is a lot more work than we think was intended or necessary. Um, we ask that you direct us to limit that scope just to these standalone shops. And the fourth and final item, similar to the council's discussion of gaming cafes, uh, we think that these licensing regulations give us enough to work with from an enforcement standpoint, um, to really just rely on those and not to have a duplicative set of, um, smoking requirements as well as the licensing requirements. With that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, uh, Assistant City Manager Cole. And so with that, for the council this evening, um, we're not voting on a particular policy. This is just a discussion that's being continued. So you can have more than one bite at the apple as we discuss this and we will then, uh, address the four items as presented here. So for the first item regarding the smoking lounges, um, this is an item where the, uh, city staff are asking for a direction on whether or not the city, um, council should discuss if this is an intended outcome of the tobacco regulations where we have, uh, means and ways to have smoking. So it, we do, we can have smoking lounges, correct? But it seems that there are multiple, uh, steps to achieve that. Is that our interpretation?
Yes, perhaps put even more directly, Madam Mayor, um, you know, if, if there is a desire by the city council at this point to consider an establishment, or I should say, if there's not a desire to consider such an establishment, we can communicate that to the folks that are approaching us.
Okay.
If there is a desire to consider that, there may be some changes that, that the, the body should consider to, to make that just more practical.
Understood. With that, are there any comments or questions from the council? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
Thanks. We did have a smoking lounge at one point on Elkott Quinn Road. I don't know if that was formal or informal, uh, but, um, it closed a number of years ago and it was relatively trouble free. I think it was just a bunch of guys sitting around smoking cigars and they were relatively trouble free. But, um, just saying that it didn't, it didn't seem to attract problems when, when it was a business.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding what direction the council would like, uh, staff to pursue? Yes, Alderman McHale.
I mean, I don't really have a huge problem with a cigar lounge or a hookah lounge, but it just, I just wonder what does that open us, us up to in the future? Um, will there be, um, just where you can smoke marijuana and then go out? Like, I don't know what regulations we have from the state level for that. It's also new, so I would just be a little bit apprehensive on if we, you know, start with one, what does it bring in the future? But as far as like a cigar lounge or a hookah lounge, I don't, I don't see a, a problem with, with that.
Assistant City Manager Cole, would you be able to, um, provide maybe some additional color as to what other regulations would be required of a smoking lounge?
Sure. So, uh, older woman, kind of to your question, um, medical and recreational marijuana in the state regulated differently so that you can buy something that's regulated by the cannabis regulation tax act and smoke it there, at least not without additional action by the city. You can put plenty of other things in that pipe, uh, potentially some of these other substances we're talking about that aren't regulated like that and, and so on. I mean, you could regulate that. If you had a smoking lounge come through, you could try to bring that in a, a bit more narrowly to just nicotine or tobacco products or something like that.
Okay. So it, any other questions regarding that item? No?
No.
Okay. So it sounds like we are having a response from council that does not preclude a smoking lounge to enter the, uh, to enter the city limits. And so the regulations as originally written and the ordinances that are provided, um, it sounds like, uh, the council would be in favor of making that a more direct process since there is no, um, there's no comment as to why we wouldn't pursue. I'm getting nods from both, from both sides of the, of the dais today. So if no other comments on smoking lounges, let's move on to the three items that are being proposed, um, to either have sales bans on these items or if we should continue to, for, for one of them, we already have as a regulated substance in our code, which is the hemp derived THC. And we don't have any mention in our code of the other two, the kratom and the tien, uh, tienaptine. So, um, from the council, do we have any questions as to what direction we would like to pursue for those two subs? Well, all three of those substances, I think we should start with the other two, which just are not listed at all in our ordinances. Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Assistant Manager Cole, can you tell me, you provided some information on some of these other products in the packet that was for the committee of the hall. Who provided that?
Sure. So there was, there was a staff description in the staff memorandum. Um, I wrote that and there's some citations referenced. There's also some information in there specific to kratom that was submitted by a, a trade association, the American Kratom Association, I believe. And that was, you had a different letterhead and
Do we know who they are? Do we know who they are?
Nothing aside from that they're a trade organization. I believe they've, you know, they have a, most likely they have a, um, like a search engine alert and city kratom ban showed up all on the same list if I was to take a guess.
And what is the activity that's going, first, two sides of this question here. The first side is what's going on to regulate these derivatives or whatever they are. I haven't looked at their chemistry yet, but I will. What is going on in the state and federal level as far as regulating the other products? And what is going on in other local jurisdictions? Give us an example of what other the local jurisdictions are doing and what their discussions have been on this. Thank you.
Sure. So, um, on the substances, easiest perhaps just to keep going in, in the order presented up on the slide. Since the federal government made this, uh, you know, dispensation or allowance for industrial hemp products, wide open field, um, the state mirrored the, the federal government of being relatively permissive. And so you can get CBD products, different, um, THC, I'm not sure what the term is that you would use, distillates or derivatives. You know, some substances have like a psychoactive effect and those aren't regulated, at least in Illinois, as, um, you know, recreational marijuana, it seems the fed, the federal government is not treating them in any particular way, um, or at least they're not enforcing it as a drug matter. In Springfield, uh, again, during this session, there was some talk about, um, putting more restrictions in place, really especially on derivatives of THC. So THC Delta eight and Delta nine. Um, I would say that most of the discussion around that was for competitive reasons. There was a perception by the marijuana industry that they're engaging in illegal, highly regulated product. Um, and all of these other proprietors were able to go out, kind of end, end run the rules, sell to who they like to, pay no taxes for it, and that that was an unfair competition. Of course, when the state introduced a bill to, to work on that and to try to level that playing field, there was a big, um, concern raised especially by a few different trade groups, including the, uh, the Brewers Association. So there's a bit of a contraction in Illinois brewing and some of those establishments have invested in THC beverages and this would upset, you know, the assumptions under which they made their investment. Um, when last I checked, you know, the, the general assembly's still finishing up today. Um, I don't believe those bills were set to move today. That could have changed today, um, but it looks like it would be waiting till the fall or, or later. The other two, um, you know, both kratom and I'm gonna keep butchering the pronunciation here, uh, tianapine, um, have, are, are in a bit of a gray area. I mean, the F, FDA has said that they're potentially being marketed illegally and they are potentially unsafe. The Kratom Association has some conflicting views of the FDA's testimony there. But, uh, in practice, there's no federal regulation happening. Kratom in some of our adjacent states can't be sold legally. Apparently, um, don't know if it can be legally or not here in Illinois, but it is. Proprietors are opening up and setting up shop. Uh, before doing my research for this memo, like I couldn't even tell you about tianapine. I haven't seen it anywhere. Not that I frequent these places, hadn't heard of it. Um, but again, some communities have acted to, um, to ban it. Um, there are a few examples in the staff memorandum. I think Orland Park has entered this world, maybe Highland Park as well, but, um, it's really just sales bans. So I'm not aware of another community in Illinois that would have kind of folded this in under a licensing scheme. But also this, the city's licensing scheme is relatively, um, unique. I mean, a lot of communities have tried to deal with tobacco vape CBD shops in different ways. Um, I'm not aware of another one that has done like a cap and licensing system as well in Meadows House.
Okay. So the only ban that you hear from other cities is on the sale, not in possession or anything like that?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with, uh, the community that's done possession and that would of course be a lot harder to enforce.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Are these both not very familiar with this world? Are these both things that people vape? These, the kratom and the tienapine, are those go into like a vaping canister?
Yeah, definitely not an expert here either. Um, I think kratoms generally smoked, um, tianapine I think is, is used in other parts of the world as, as like a consumed, um, pill or, or powder.
If I could add, kratom is also mixed in. So it's, it, it sometimes is sold in a capsule format or in a powder that can be mixed into water, um, and consumed as a beverage.
Okay. Just as a parent of a, of a high school age child, these two drugs make me nervous on a, make it any easier for them to get it. Cause as long, as soon as they're eighteen, they can legally buy it. Twenty-one. Twen- oh, sorry. Give me a minute. Okay, nevermind. Good. I thought it was the same as tobacco.
Uh, tobacco is twenty-one.
See, I don't smoke. These are things I don't know. Okay, cool.
Yeah. Um, our ordinances and, um, and the specialty stores that we have in, in the city are twenty-one and older for the products that are sold, correct?
For the regulated products, right? So what you're seeing up here, uh, in a specialty store, that would have to be limited to twenty-one and up for like all those industrial hemp products. Um, right now kratom and tianapine are, are not within that umbrella. I'm not aware of an age limit for them. In practice, I don't think those stores actually admit people underage. The one current enforcement matter accepted, but, um, you know, that is a possibility under the city's, um, ordinances today.
Mayor, if I may, there, there is a state act, the Kratom Control Act, which allows for the sale of kratom to individuals eighteen or older. Because of the way in which the product is used, it's not a particularly smoking item. It's, as I mentioned before, something that can be consumed in other ways besides just vaping or smoking the product.
Thank you for the clarification. So then one option, Alderman Boucher, that we could put forth, um, for city staff is to include these, um, these items as regulated substances within the ordinance. So that way the twenty-one or older, um, regulation would apply within specialty shops. Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think Assistant Manager Cole, if I'm remembering right from the materials, we currently don't have any shops in town selling this that we're aware of. Is that correct? Granted, what Manager Sabo just said about the kratom through the state, some, there's the acts going through, but if I'm remembering the write-up correctly, we, we're not aware of any current of the six specialty stores selling these.
Um, I'm not aware of any selling, uh, tianapine.
Okay.
It wouldn't surprise me if one or more of the shops we have is selling kratom, but I, I don't know that.
Okay.
Definitively.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Certainly. Okay. So it sounds like we have a lot of questions for staff. I'm looking to see if there's any, um, if there's any direction from council at this time regarding whether or not city staff should begin to pursue, um, either banning these substances. It doesn't sound like there has been, um, any support or discussion regarding banning them. But it does sound like there has been some discussion of including these as regulated substances in our ordinance. Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
If the states of Indiana and Wisconsin thought it was worth banning the sale of kratom, uh, I could, I could just see that, um, we could, we could also jump on that bandwagon. They, they must have had a reason to, to go through the time and the trouble to ban those two, those substances from those two states. So I, I, I wouldn't mind piggybacking off of their good common sense and, and saying maybe we should do the same thing.
A question for city staff. If we are to include a sales ban where the enforcement takes place at our specialty shops, is this also something that would carry over for our internet sales? Or is that something that is out of scope for the city of Rolling Meadows?
I, I'm not sure if it's out of scope, but practically speaking, I, I don't think it would be possible to enforce.
Okay.
Or practical is probably a better term.
Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Alderman. I, I'm not opposed to having the ban on them. As Alderman Bud Matts, that's why I just wanted to confirm if there's any currently selling it now. Is, then that could have some impacts there on current businesses, but I, I would not be opposed to abandon until there's more information from the FDA or the state taking action on it. We kind of just pace with what state and feds are doing like we've done on other items.
Yes, and to Alderman O'Brien's point, so the way that FDA research and approvals take place, it sounds like this is a chicken and egg problem where the more people who are utilizing it, the stronger the case for the FDA to research and then provide studies and control studies to determine the actual effects. And we don't have that currently. So, um, has city staff done, uh, has any recommendations with how other communities have responded to FDA reviews in the past? And I mean, I, I feel like the closest that we might have is marijuana, which was legislated and regulated locally across various municipalities in the United States before the FDA had any additional research and funding that went into that substance. Is, do we consider these substances also find, finding themselves along that same trajectory? And if so, is the, what, I think the council's looking for some guidance as to their role in that regulatory ecosystem.
Madam Mayor, what I would say is, um, uh, you know, this staff memorandum was really, on this topic was intended to be introductory. If there's a desire for a, a deeper look at some of these questions that, that you and other members of the council are raising, we can take that deeper look and bring that back to you in the future.
Okay. So since we've had, um, beginning with Alderman Kohler as to the chemical structure of some of these substances, down to what was the reasoning behind Wisconsin and Indiana doing an entire state ban? I do think that the council is interested in the potential impact of these, uh, substances before we would pursue, yeah, either including them in an ordinance as a regulated substance or banning them outright. I'm getting some heads shaking, yes, on, on both sides of the dais. So with that, uh, we'll move on to item C, which is the background check for licenses. So, um, this is a question from staff to say that previously, the way that the ordinance was written, any establishment that sells these regulated substances have to undergo an extensive background check when the original intent was just for the specialty shops versus, um, a, a, a larger big box store. Um, is this something that the council wants to continue to require of city staff to require these background checks for anyone selling any of our regulated substances? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure, when you do a background check, check, what are we looking for that we would either say that the licensee would not be allowed or the license would not be issued to that?
the licensee would not be allowed, or the license would not be issued to that person or institution? Or would be? What are we looking for in the background check? Do you know?
Sure, so we can, I don't know if we want our city manager to answer that question and walk through the process, or Police Chief Nowacki?
I'm happy to start. Chief Nowacki or Assistant City Manager, if you'd like to jump in, please do. On the background investigation for a licensee, we're typically looking at, has there been a history where this individual has had a tobacco license which has been taken away from another community due to violations of tobacco regulations in that respect, in that specific community? So sales of tobacco to minors, failure to pay certain taxes that are required for, for the sale of tobacco, as well as what we'll call crimes of moral perpetuity type of scenarios. Using all of those different factors, there could be a determination made as to whether or not the individual who's applying for a license with the city, based on their past criminal history, would be found to be someone that we would want to recommend having a license here in our town. So those are the types of things that we're looking for. You know, it, it is a case by case basis. And, you know, there may be mitigation that that individual could offer, but at the end of the day, we look at the record and the record speaks for itself as far as are there any convictions of those types? And then that could be used as a basis of whether or not to, to move forward or not with that licensee's application.
That information would be provided to council before we approve any licenses?
Looking to, when, when we amended the code, is that something that's coming back to council or is that administrative? I'm drawing a blank here.
The amendment to the.
To the tobacco, adding the background investigation. Check the code real quick.
I believe the code states that we are supposed to conduct that background check for all of these licensees. And so that would be coming back as, as part of the larger package.
The approval of the license itself, so not the specific information found in that background screening. But I believe it would be presented to the city's liquor commissioner, who at that point would make the determination similar to a liquor license on how we would, whether or not that license application would proceed to being considered by the city council or not.
Thank you.
So then along those lines, if it's similar to the liquor license process, then that license comes before the council. As it's currently written, it also comes before planning and zoning for a special use? Is that correct?
That has not actually happened yet, but yes, that's the, the process that was laid out.
So then there's that additional layer in addition to the liquor commissioner saying yea or nay? And then the, the planning and zoning commission giving their recommendation? And then the council ultimately making that determination as well? So there's actually more regulation involved than a liquor license because of that zoning component. We'll come back to the zoning component. So right now, the, the question before the council is whether or not we want a full background check on accessory use and on specialty shops. So, any additional questions on that, Aldrin Kohler?
No.
Okay. Yes, Aldrin O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. And City Manager Sabo or Chief Nowacki, since you're the experts on it, can you just, I'm not opposed to just having this for the accessories, but can you confirm how it's done? Or how it would be done for a Juul or Meyer that's the non-accessory? Does that mean the owner, the manager goes through a background check? Cause I can't imagine we put the checker through the background check. So what, the variance there?
The, so for a corporate entity, it would be the person who's responsible in the event that there's a violation or something that would occur with the license. When it comes to larger multi, you know, let's take a Starbucks for example, a multinational corporation. You'll typically get information on the board of directors or individuals who are in executive positions. And then the managers, ultimately, the person that at the local level is the responsible individual for that license. And so if the manager were to be, if the manager were to depart and a new manager appointed, that new manager would then come in and get a background check and would be added onto the license if they, if they successfully get through that process. But yes, it's typically, the, the primary point of contact is the local manager who's responsible. It's not the individual employees who are at the point of sale transactions. It's the person who's responsible for and managing the operations of that store.
And that would be the same as well for a specialty shop. We're not expecting the individual employees to go through that background check either.
Right, thank you. And in that perspective, I'm, I'm not opposed to writing how I think the initial intent was or would be for accessory shops, but that's my perspective. I know we're not doing any votes or anything tonight, but I'd be okay with having an accessory on them.
Another question for city staff then regarding the processes. If it, if that process for a corporate entity is taking a significant amount of time, is that just because we anticipate higher turnover from their management as opposed to a specialty shop? Or is there some other layer of oversight that we're expecting? That we would treat these two, two businesses or business types differently?
So the timing on it typically involves a fingerprinting and then review of the law enforcement records. That would also include contacts, so if there was any sort of police contact in a different community, potentially reaching out and doing additional, an additional information search in that community to understand what kind of police contact that was. Chief Nowacki, I don't know if there's anything additional as far as the background screening process that you could weigh in on?
No, I think the city manager covered it was pretty thoroughly. What we do, like I said, we do an individual interview, we do fingerprint checks. And if we do uncover information, obviously we do follow-ups on that regarding like character and previous police contacts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council on the background check item? So Aldrin O'Brien, he provided some, some direction, which is to say that he'd be in favor of eliminating the background check requirement for accessory use? Is there any other comments regarding that proposal here this evening?
Questions?
Yes, Aldrin Budmats.
So a gas station, they're selling these things as accessory to their gasoline sales? Is that somebody who would, who then wouldn't get a background check?
Correct. So anyone who is selling tobacco irrespective of accessory or primary sales product that they sell would have to go through this background check irrespective of if it's a tobacco store or a gas station?
Thank you. I mean, we have, we have gas stations that can't pass liquor background checks, so. So, but we're gonna let them sell kratom, which has hallucinogenic effects? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking out loud.
So then we've got, so we have two, two questions then before the council here as to where we're leaning as far as direction, which is one to say, if you are already going through a background check for specialty stores, why treat another business entity any differently if the products that they're selling are the same? Is that correct, Aldrin Budmats?
I mean, if they're going through a background check for liquor anyway, so. If they're already going through a background check, so.
Aldrin McHale, it looked like you wanted to.
But not, well, mine was kind of the same thing in that if they're going through a liquor background check, it would probably kind of go together in a way, right? But not all gas stations sell liquor. But these, these drugs, they are, they, they do produce hallucinogenic components and things like that, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't treat that the same as alcohol.
Okay. Yes, Aldrin O'Brien.
No, Aldrin Budmats, I appreciate your question. So for my own clarity then, cause I might have misinterpreted, so it's, we don't track this on a monthly basis based on the ten percent. It's ten percent of square footage, so that, that's my error. So like a CVS, a Juul, a Meyer, those are no brainers that right now they're acting as an accessory. But Aldrin Budmats' point is about a gas station, cause we know they sell tobacco products, they sell a whole bunch of products. Those are not, would not be included. So I would, I would be in support of, that's why I want to clarify what I said. Is if it's not based on monthly revenue or the ten percent or however we determine that, I would certainly be in favor of a background check for those entities as well. Cause like we said, Juul has to go through one at some point when they got their liquor license. So I guess that was my own thing I wanted to clarify is how we look at the entities, cause I heard about ten percent of square footage or shelf space.
So is your question just for clarification as to what's considered accessory and then what's considered a specialty shop?
Right.
Okay.
And it sounds like it's based on ten percent of square footage or shelf space, if I'm tracking correctly?
Sure, so an accessory retailer, I'll go back here. So an accessory retailer really was previously the city's just tobacco license, right? So if you're selling cigarettes or tobacco products at any scale within the city, you need an accessory license. That doesn't bring in CBD, THC, anything like that, because there are a lot of products that are pretty, you know, popular in some contexts now that, you know, are being sold by a lot of different retailers, right? You know, I remember when we were writing this, I went into Juul Osco and the magazine was like the CBD revolution or something on the checkout. Well, it's a very timely discussion to be having. When you get to a specialty shop, that is ten percent or more by floor area that are selling tobacco or vape, or paraphernalia, or THC, or CBD. And that definition is proven to be pretty good in getting just these six establishments within this different scheme. The way the code is written now, it says that the chief of police shall investigate the background of anyone getting all of these different types of licenses. So potentially some folks who don't have a liquor license, but do have this tobacco license, would then be subject to a background check and potentially not receiving that license. We don't know, we don't believe, we don't know if that was the city council's intent. If it's the intent to conduct it that way, we can certainly do that. But the proposal in, in the memorandum would be just to limit the scope of those background checks to these six specialty shop establishments and potentially, again, any other specialty shops or smoking lounges that the, the city would approve in the future.
I think, I think one, I appreciate that Assistant Manager Cole, that helps my understanding. So if I'm tracking correctly, what's out there now as an accessory, in theory, they should only be selling tobacco products. Based on the current code that we revised last year, it doesn't include the vape products and the scented strawberry flavor.
They could include other things without a license. So in theory, right, a, you know, a, a gas, you can go into a gas station and they could sell CBD gummies and they would not require a license to do that.
I guess that's a bigger question than I can over just discussion tonight. Is that something we want to do as a council? Like right now, if they're acting as an accessory, accessory, my understanding correctly is tobacco products only, but they could be selling other stuff that we have no idea they are. So it's just a question that came to my, I don't know how I feel one way or another, but I appreciate the clarification that code currently accessory is tobacco only, and I think we all know they're selling, any entity selling more stuff than tobacco, depending on what license they have. So I don't know what direction we want to go. I just had that light bulb go on, thanks to Glenn's clarification. Just a thought that I had too. Not that we want to rewrite this like we just did last year, but.
So it's, you go ahead.
Having explained it just like that, you know, the intention in making it accept, we, I think we changed the name from tobacco retailer to accessory retailer. So it didn't seem like a specialty shop would need both licenses. But when you explain it just like that, it does seem a little confusing now. I would change the name if I could go back in time.
Okay.
We have the power to do so in our ordinances, so if that needs clarification, we can certainly pursue. Any other comments or questions on the side of the dais? All right, so similar to the previous item, I do think that the council's going to require some additional clarification regarding background checks and compare, and to compare and contrast all of the licenses that exist, both for our accessory retailers, specialty shops, and potentially a smoking lounge, since there was no, there was no resistance from the council this evening regarding allowing a smoking lounge to set up shop in the city of Rolling Meadows. And it sounds like the council then would want to take that information and see how that would be incorporated with the other three potentially regulated items or banning, or not items, I'm sorry, substances that either might want to be banned or regulated within the city as well. So we'll take items two and three and, and return to those before making a decision or, or providing direction, it sounds like. Okay. And then this brings us to the fourth item, which is a request for eliminating the zoning requirements for specialty shops. Is there any questions or comments regarding this item? Yes, Aldrin O'Brien.
Duff telling our conversation last week on gaming cafes or gaming accessories that will come forward tonight. I'm not opposed if we want to tweak it where there has to be the public notice. If it's not already there, if we, I'm not opposed to removing it from zoning from an administrative perspective to ease staff time on these, cause again, we've got not a ton in town right now, but to any way we can ease staff, cause there's obviously a lot of activity going on, if we can do some type of public notice, I think that still fair, as long as we can repeal the zoning, but do something similar to when somebody wants to open a gaming accessory that the public's noticed.
So Aldrin O'Brien has put forth the, the request that if we are to repeal the zoning requirements of the current ordinance for specialty shops, that there is language within our code that requires public notice to be sent ahead of time before this item is considered in the form of a public hearing, in the form of a public hearing. Similar to our committee of the whole consensus last week regarding potentially new gaming cafes. Any questions or comments on that or in general on, on zoning? Anyone opposed to Aldrin O'Brien's proposal? Okay, I'm gonna make a, you guys do a straw vote, cause I'm not getting much over here. So if there's any opposition to, first of all, is there any opposition to repealing the zoning requirements? None. No opposition to repeat, so there's no opposition to repealing the zoning requirements? Those who would request that we require in our code a public, a public notice, which includes a public hearing in our agenda. Unanimous, so six. So it sounds like for item D, there is direction to repeal the zoning requirements. But to then also include in the code the requirement of a public hearing. And public notice as well.
Just somehow to get the warn-up, yes, Mayor?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions outside of the four items that staff needed direction this evening on this item? Or shall we move forward on to the next agenda component of this evening? Okay, thank you very much. In that case, we will continue with this evening's agenda. And this brings us to the mayor's report. I have no report this evening. Are there any ward reports this evening? Yes, Aldrin Boucher.
I would just like to thank the police department for their lovely traffic control through Ward Four, Five and Six last Wednesday for graduation. Parents were very happy with how easy it was to get through Central Road. So thank you very much for that time to get everybody to graduation safely and on time.
Thank you. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Yes, Aldrin McHale.
I just wanted to mention a quick thank you to Trinity Lutheran Church from this weekend. They were allowing us to stage all of the Memorial Day parade. Participants in their parking lots and above and beyond opened their doors so that we could use the restroom, get some shade and everything like that. So thank you to Trinity Lutheran Church. It was a really great Memorial Day event and we appreciate the collaboration.
Thank you. Are there any other ward reports? Okay, seeing none, at this time, we will open up the meeting for a public comment for 20 minutes. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee to the elected officials in order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. And in order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the city council. Questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing an nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officials. the individual to address the council members or other city officials present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity should not be used in any manner. With that, I have, it sounds like we have two individuals coming up together. Is there one of you who will be, is it Tim or Todd who will be approaching, or both this evening? Both? Okay. And this is with regards to video gaming.
Yes.
Please approach.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Appreciate that opportunity tonight. Yeah, we just wanted to make comment, obviously, there's a bunch of changes to the GA and GC license and ordinance number 24 dash 00. Not only changes, but there's a bunch of additions that was reviewed in the packet tonight. We specifically wanted to make a comment on, if your agenda reads the same as mine, it was page 118, and under that section, it's page 12 of 15, under change of ownership, number eight, the second one down, and how this kind of affects us, we'd like to just discuss that real quick. So Todd Yormer, Tim Yardmark, we're owners of Daisy's Cafe, Rick Dunn, 3334 Kirchhoff Road. We've been in business for quite some time here in the city, and we've really done everything the city's asked as far as gaming, you know, we've got gaming cafes, the GC licenses. So kind of how this affects us, and I'll just read it real quick, it's, "A GC license shall terminate immediately without the possibility of renewal if an aggregate total of 50% or more of the beneficial ownership of the GC license has changed when compared to the licensee's stated ownership of the 2024 license year." Now, we have a longstanding lease down the street here. We plan on being here for a long time, but how this affects us is, let's just say, when we want to sell our business, 20, 25 years down the road, when we want to retire, business is not worth anything then, according to this, how the language this is read. So we'd love to possibly get this admitted for tonight for further discussion for, you know, for city council. We know other GC holders in the city, it's been a big discussion, there's been some bad apples around, is what we hear, and we're kind of getting thrown in the same mix as that. So we would just ask for maybe further discussion, let's get it admitted tonight. So we've put a lot of money in our business, when we possibly try to sell it someday, we'd like to recoup some of our money that we put into it.
Yeah, and I'll chime in. I understand, and we are acutely aware that having a license in the city of Rolling Meadows, having a business license, having a liquor license, having a gaming cafe license is a privilege, not a right, and we operate every day knowing that, and we don't take that for granted, and that's why we do things the right way, because that's the right way to do it. It is a shame, I guess, that some bad apples could potentially spoil it for the bunch. We just wanted an opportunity to discuss this further. I think to lump it in altogether is maybe not the right solution. Maybe it could be handled on a case-by-case basis. I don't know exactly what that looks like. A few examples are maybe if the business is in good standing, maybe if they pay their ST1s on time, maybe if they apply for their liquor license in a timely manner, maybe if they have zero violations with these surprise inspections, which we completely support, maybe that could be considered for, on a case-by-case basis, where the liquor commissioner could approve or deny that transfer of license. So that was just an idea, open to comments on that. Thank you for that, thank you for that, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you do stick around, we will, when the item comes up, we can always open up the floor if the council has further questions. Thank you. We have no other signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening, so public comment is now closed, and we will move on to our pending item, which is item A, ordinance number 24 dash 26, which is to amend the municipal code concerning connections to the city's water, storm, and sanitary sewer lines, and for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? So, thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. And for item B, ordinance 24 dash 27, we do have a change from the packet, so the council does have before them a schematic of the driveway changes. Just want to make sure that everybody, yes, okay, so I'm getting nuts, for everyone that they do have that in front of them. So when considering item B for ordinance number 24 dash 27, to grant a text amendment to the zoning ordinance for residential driveway width and garage door width, and for second reading, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. For item C, ordinance number 24 dash 28, to grant a variation of the minimum rear and side yard setbacks for the property at 4441 Denny Court, in for Fitzgerald, which is in for second reading, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next items on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading, which consist of three items E through G. Does any older person wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for ordinances? Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Item F, please.
Are there any others? All right, seeing none, yes.
Forgive me, Madam Mayor, staff is requesting a waiver of first reading for item E.
That is correct. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, so item E will also be removed, so we do not have a consent agenda. We will go through all three of these individually, starting with item F, which is ordinance number 24 dash 00, which is to amend regulations concerning video gaming and class GA and GC liquor licenses in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Alderman O'Brien, you pulled it, so even though we don't have a consent anymore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Just to follow up to my comments last week, I'm very concerned about this. The rules have been in place, we've spent countless hours on rules, which are being adhered to. As we learned last week, we discussed last week, the one operator is ceasing termination at the end of the year. Voluntarily, they're turning their license and they're done. To me, I think we have to parse, somebody just closing, we just talked about the specialty stores for vaping, one store just closed shop and left. That's fine, a business can do that now, but if there's trying to sell, I think we're setting a very bad precedent, knowing that we've got a lot of economic development we've allocated money to, staff's looking at that, the sub-area planning along Kirchhoff. I've never owned a business, but I've been in the corporate world for 25 years. I would be hesitant to bring a business, if it's a mom and pop, or it's a large corporation, if we're going to change established rules into the fourth quarter. I think that's a bad precedent. The enforcement's clearly working, we had one brought to our attention tonight about vaping, we've had one brought to our attention about the gaming. I think it's a very bad precedent, so I'd like to recommend striking that second part of the ordinance, and then, as I mentioned last week, the new owner, just like they do today, we talked a lot about consistency tonight between vaping and other items, make it a level playing field, is that then it's a private matter between the potential seller and the buyer, that if they can't get the liquor license on their own merit, that's a private matter that I don't think government should interfere with. Is that we at least give them the right to do that? I'm all for no more cafes coming in. I mentioned that last week. I have not had one call from a resident complaining, the only thing I've heard is we don't want Las Vegas coming to Meadows, which I think our rules are doing. So I would just, from an EDC perspective, now put in my EDC hat, I'd be very apprehensive with all the great work staff and council are doing to try and get businesses here, seeing what people want in Rolling Meadows, I'd be hesitant to bring a new business in if we're going to change the rules the fourth quarter. So I'd like that potentially stricken altogether, and then follow the, we do with liquor licenses for every other entity that has a liquor license on a potential transfer.
Okay, so Alderman O'Brien, I have the proposed code in front of me, and I'm looking for the subsection that you would, that you're proposing is stricken, and to then perhaps make a motion for that amendment. Is that, is that what we're looking to do?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm looking...
I should be at the bottom of page 133, based on how I downloaded it from this site.
I see.
It's the new section eight, it appears, Roman numeral two.
So it'd be page 118.
118 in our PDF.
Yep.
Then I'm off. My PDF is 133.
All right. Give me one moment while I pull this up, so we're all looking at the same thing.
Right here, right about, this one. Yep, okay.
Okay, so this is sub-item eight, and then roman numeral two. So your amendment is to strike item two, which states, "The GC license shall terminate immediately and without the possibility of renewal if an aggregate total of 50% or more of the beneficial ownership of the GC license has changed when compared to the licensee's stated owners for the 2024 license year." Okay, is there a second? Alderman Boucher has the second. So before us now, is there any discussion regarding striking this requirement in the proposed code? I'm going to go to Alderman Bud Matts, and then we'll come back to you, Alderman O'Brien. Go ahead.
So I do have experience selling, a small concern, and I understand the problem, the problem that the city has is that when the applicant comes, no matter who he is, we're looking at them, and they're going to come to us with a business plan, it's going to be sky blue, beautiful, and it's going to be wonderful, and then it takes us six months to a year, to a year and a half to find out if that's really how it develops. And so when the bad apples came to us, and they had a business plan, it looked pretty. When these guys came to us with a business plan, it looked pretty. When they did it, they did it right, they've been wonderful to work with, and I have a hard time, I agree that they deserve their right to sell their business. However, we have no way of controlling, and they have no way of controlling who it is that they're going to sell to. They're going to sell to the person who pays the highest price. I sold my business to the person who paid the highest price. It's America, it's capitalism, and that's why we're here, and I get it. And so they're going to want to sell it to somebody, and then if we're obligated, okay, to let that license transfer to whoever it is they're selling, because it's an ongoing concern, that's been run very well, and then we're stuck with what becomes a bad apple six months down the road, then we effectively weeded out our ability to get rid of the bad apples, because we, once they're here, there's really, it's really difficult to get rid of them, it's been several years we've been living and dying with some of the bad apples. So I get the fact that they want to sell their business and grow the capital so that they have something to sell, and it's easier to sell with a license than without, but seeing that we have no way of regulating how, the background check doesn't always provide us with all of the information that we need, and then people slip through, and they come with a big, beautiful business plan, and then it doesn't turn out as good. If they all ran their, are their gaming cafes as beautifully as Daisy's does, we wouldn't be having this conversation, but they don't. And we don't know what the next guy is going to run it like when Daisy's does sell, unfortunately.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Cole, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman O'Brien, did you want to, we get only two bites at the apple, so, do you want to wait for Alderman Kohler, you want to come back? Okay, go ahead, Alderman Kohler.
Can I just make clarification? In a liquor license, when you sell the business, let's say you own a tavern, and you sell the business, and I do have experience with this personally, my liquor license doesn't transfer to the new business, they have to renew it. Is that the same with this?
Yes, that is correct.
So if Daisy's were to sell to somebody, that license doesn't automatically transfer, the new owners have to renew. So what they're asking us to do is to strike basically that without the possibility of renewal from this thing, is that what we're asking for? And if there is a possibility of renewal, is that correct? Is that what you're asking? Taking Alderman over?
Go ahead, Alderman.
I want to make sure it's on my second bite of the apple if I'm answering a question.
You may clarify.
Yes, that's what I'm asking for, is we just follow suit, the same way we treat any liquor, any place that can currently sell booze, if they sell, we have a process in place. We just treat gaming cafe, like, I'm, again, completely fine with them naturally closing. There's a difference between closing your doors and wanting to sell your business, is that it's just not a sale, they have the opportunity, meaning the new owners, to come before us, we, chief does the background check, if we find something, and yes, Alderman Bud Matts, it's taken us a long time to weed out the bad apples. I don't disagree with you on that, but it works. And that's what I've learned, being on council for five years, it takes a long time to get somebody to cut their grass. I think we've all received those phone calls, because as landowners, they have a right until we have to intervene. I think we all get that call annually, probably about this time of year, about, you know, the process is in place, it works. From if it's cutting grass to trying to sell a business, it does take time, and people have the right for that time, it's not always as efficient as we'd like it to be as council members, but just to be treated the same. And if they can't get the liquor license, that's the private matter between the seller and the potential buyer.
So that was clarification, Alderman Kohler. What additional questions do you have?
No, that's my only question, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding the proposed amendment to strike sub-item eight two? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
I would have to agree with Alderman O'Brien. I think if we have processes in place, we, this seems redundant. If it's working with liquor licenses, I don't see why it wouldn't work with a gaming license as well. And I'm in that same boat of, I'm not necessarily positive or negative of gaming licenses, but I also am not big on government putting more regulations in, or we don't need them. If it's working for the liquor license, I would assume that we should assume it should work for this as well, and I would hate for us to cut businesses who are working, cut them at the knees for me to sell, or when we lose that business, because then it's closing its doors. So what we're doing is we're cutting a business from continuing to grow, so I just, I would agree with Alderman O'Brien, I think it's redundant what we're looking to do.
So some of the clarification from the committee of the whole last week was that the difference between a class D liquor license and a GC is that there's a transfer, because in the code, the class D liquor license would still exist. The way that this ordinance is being presented is that the gaming cafe or the GC license would no longer exist. So if there's a transfer of a license, then the question becomes a transfer into what if the GC doesn't exist anymore? The direction from the council, from the committee of the whole last Tuesday, was that the council supported, had a majority support for a gaming accessory license. And so the difference between a GC and a GA is the percentage of revenue coming in from food versus from gaming. And so it's not that gaming is necessarily going away under the requirements? Okay.
I did all the reading and follow-up, I read through all the stuff that I missed last week, but I just don't think we should stop a business from being able to continue to be a business.
Understood, just wanted to make sure we had that clarified as well. Yes, Alderman McHale.
Just, I mean, my interpretation, what I took from last week's conversation, was that we were trying to eliminate gaming cafes. So the goal is to pull the licenses, because we don't want to have gaming cafes anymore. So if we were to allow the businesses to be sold, the way we were talking about, we would be allowing them to continue as gaming cafe, which is, from what I took away last week, is not what we wanted. So I'm just a little bit confused with that. If, let's say Daisy's wanted to sell, is this, like, they can't sell it to an operator that would be able to get a gaming accessory license and do, you know, business as a restaurant with the gaming license, and go through the process just like everybody else? I guess I'm confused with what is actually being sold that they can't get.
So we have both of the operators here. Would you like us to open the floor to be able to answer Alderman McHale's question?
Sure.
Okay, can I have a motion to, I can motion to open up the floor? Motion to open up the floor. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Alderman McHale for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, we... So we have both of the operators here. Would you like us to open the floor to be able to answer Alderman McHale's question? Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to, I can motion to open up the floor? Motion to open up the floor. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Alderman McHale for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We now have the floor open. Please approach.
Thank you. So just to clarify, we're not looking to sell today or tomorrow. This would be a precedent for five, ten, fifteen years down the road. Just wanna clarify that. Don't want there to be any rumors. So yeah, so the question was gaming cafe versus gaming accessory, which was essentially a restaurant. As you know, I've read the fifteen pages, just like you have, seventy percent, thirty percent revenue with the gaming, with a, with the restaurant. With a gaming cafe, there's a different set of criteria, right? It's a smaller fifteen hundred square foot place. Our primary source of revenue is gaming. We choose to do some food, some liquor license and alcohol and other things like that. So we would sell it potentially down the road as a gaming cafe. I don't know many people that are buying restaurants right now, especially with restrictions on it. It's a tough sell. Again, not that we're actively looking to sell today, but as Alderman O'Brien said, I think it's an easier conversation just to vet the new owner, just as we were vetted six years ago by Martha Corner and Mayor Prerna and everyone else who came to our facilities in Itasca and ordered food and said, "Boy, this is an establishment that we'd like to have in City of Rolling Meadows." That vetting process worked. Were there some that, that came in under the guise of something? Yeah. That wasn't us. So to answer your question, yeah, it would be a G C, that's what we're asking for.
So, and then just to clarify, Alderman-
Thank you.
Alderman McHale, did you have any other questions with regards to what would be an impediment to selling for a G A?
I mean, it's just, it's a gaming cafe. We're just continuing the cycle of the cafes that it didn't seem that we wanted to go in that in the beginning, when this all came down, out five, six years ago, where it was supposed to be a restaurant and with, with the gaming, and then we ended up with gaming cafes. So I think I have my, my questions answered. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for our operators here, while it's open? Yes, Alderman Budmats?
So do your licenses, I mean, would your gaming licenses, if your machines even transfer to another owner? Or would they have to set up their own, their own gaming, the whole deal with somebody new? Chances are maybe not even the same operator.
That's a great question. So there is a legal name, right? Our legal name is Daisy's Cafe hyphen Rolling Meadows LLC. In most sales of our type of business, they buy, is it an asset sale, is that what it's called? So they buy the name, they buy the name. And that way, that allows them to stay open from the state's perspective with video gaming terminals, okay? From the local perspective, you guys can do the vetting process however you need to. If that's background checks, if that's financials, if it's other businesses. But it would be considered an asset sale. I do know some other villages, and we could talk offline about it, have that in place where they do allow it, absolutely. They have to go through the vetting process. Some other villages actually charge. They charge the new owners a fee just to apply. But you can still deny it. You can still absolutely take the fee and deny it and say, "No, we're not happy with your business plan, we're not happy with your financials, we don't like..." whatever. You don't have to give them a reason. But all we're asking for is maybe the opportunity, right?
Second question, based on how you were set up originally, you were set up, basically you have a restaurant that's not fully used, but if somebody wanted to, to turn your space into a restaurant, they could easily do so without gaming and, and have the kitchen already, facility already in place to do so?
Yeah, I mean, we have the hood. I don't know if you've been in, so we have a commercial hood. Spent a lot of money and I know some other cafes didn't do that, but we made that investment a lot of money to put it in there. So yeah, there's, there's restaurants that can come in there and, you know. You need the hood to do a lot of stuff in the restaurants, as you know.
Right, so if you, if you were gonna sell your business as a restaurant, it's very saleable as a restaurant, given the equipment that you presently have?
It, it's tough to answer that, because we're only fifteen hundred square feet and the way that the layout currently is. It was, it was an old Great Clips. So we put a couple hundred thousand dollars of our own money into that investment to make it a full restaurant. My opinion is you'd probably need more space and there's long-term tenants next on either side of us. It's really designed to be a gaming, gaming cafe, if I'm honest. A third of the space is the slot machines and two-thirds of it is counter and TVs and entertainment. To sell it as a restaurant, it'd be a very tough ask.
I'm hoping that you guys stay here for twenty years and that we'll all be gone and somebody else can work through these issues at that point. Sorry to say. Yeah, but I, I'm just saying that, but if they all ran as, as nice as yours, we wouldn't be having these problems.
I agree. Thank you. We're just, that's why we're hoping there's further discussion, you know, in this. If you can talk about it further.
I do wanna remind the council that this is first reading as well. So this is, uh, if, if the motion before us fails, this can be brought up again at our second reading. Yes, Alderman Kohler?
Well, we have our business owners here. Item number seven in that same ordinance, which is on page one seventeen of the pack-up. Have you reviewed that and you have any objections to that one, which basically states that if the business is closed and not operating for a period of twenty-one calendar years, calendar days, calendar years, calendar days, that it would also be, the license would expire and how will you vote for renewal?
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that either.
Yeah, we're open, yeah. We would never close for twenty-one days, so.
Other than act of God, I saw, you know, pandemic, act of God, fire, insurance.
I don't have that page, but yeah, we have no problem with that one.
Pending, updating the interior of the place as long as there were permits in place. I have no issues with ninety-nine percent of it. I think it's very well-written, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for our operators while we have them on the floor? Okay, if not, looking for a motion to close the floor? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? You guys have it and the floor is closed, which brings us back to our amendment, which is to eliminate item eight-two. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Yes, Alderman McHale and then Alderman O'Brien?
Is there a way to do this on a case-by-case basis? Where you work the wording where if the business operator ends up not, you know, comes before the council or the liquor commissioner, whoever, and gets these violations, that they immediately like eliminate their chance to sell their business? Is there a way to maybe work something like that into this language? I do have a very hard time with, you know, good businesses that, that are doing right to lump them into the group with everything else. And I know that we don't really want gaming cafes, but, you know, if, if we could do something like that where there's at least a chance, would that be something that we could do?
So I'm going to have our city attorney respond to that, given that the definition of a good business or a business in good standing might be impacted by the Illinois liquor code. As to what we, what we would include or not include for that type of definition.
There can be regulations that are put into place, as Alderman McHale is suggesting. If, if, instead of eliminating completely the ability that a G C license would automatically terminate upon a change of ownership, you can put some regulations in place that that termination would be automatic for those license holders that have any suspension or fine associated with the operation of their license. A revocation of a license would reduce that G C license altogether. So if a license, if a licensee committed, you know, a conduct that was egregious, that would authorize a revocation, that would reduce that license automatically anything, but if you want something short of a a revocation or a suspension under twenty-one days, or if you even say anything. You know, you can limit that so that ownership termination would, ownership would, ownership change would result in immediate termination if that license holder has any kind of record with the city.
I'm not opposed to something like that.
Alderman Budmats, this is the last comment for this item.
Um, actually, I'm looking in a different direction. What if we, what if we allowed for a one-year restricted renewal and then, and reevaluation at the end of one period if there's a sale? That way, we have the, we have the right to find out if the new people are gonna play ball or not. And that would only be in the case where it's a business that's in good standing without, and then we can go through a, so I don't know what you call it, temporary or, but something where, if there was, if there were some that we had put in, if we had this originally, we, we already would have been able to, much easier to get rid of the bad apples earlier in the process. And we would, we would have, we would have probably not been going down this road. But if there's a way after, one year after the issuance of the license, that we can reevaluate and find out if they're, if they're meeting the intent of, of what we're trying to accomplish and if they're, and if they're, you know, always timely filing their, their returns, there are all of the different things that we can use to judge that in the, in the opinion of the liquor commissioner, if it's worth transferring that license permanently rather than a temporary one-year transfer.
And this is just within the scope of the existing G C licenses that are grandfathered in, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's still going to bring us back to item two, which was just to strike that, unless Alderman O'Brien, do you want, so we could essentially vote on striking that and then if you wanted to propose an amendment, or I'm sorry. The current motion that we have on the floor is to strike this. Do we need another motion to change this to an amendment? Because it looks like Alderman O'Brien liked what he heard here.
I'll need some help putting it into the right words, but.
So I do have some clarification regarding Alderman Budmats' proposed, what I'm hearing, a somewhat probationary period for these licenses. I do have a concern that there's still gonna be the due process implications because of the fact that the license was issued. So to revoke that license, even at the end of the year or to not renew that license, we're, we're still pretty much in the same position that we're in for any other license that exists at this time. It's, you have to have the valid basis, you're gonna have to have the hearing before the liquor commissioner. So I have a concern about that approach.
Can we already automatically have a hearing before the liquor commissioner and then the evidence of how they've, if they've timely filed all of their reports, if they've timely made all of their payments for the liquor tax, et cetera? And actually, if, I don't know, I mean, whatever, what other, that would be evidence that the liquor commissioner could use, if, if it would be automatically after one year, create the necessity for a, for a review?
The renewal does do that. The liquor commissioner has the ability to determine every time annually whether a license should be renewed. So that, that is already in the city code and the liquor commissioner has that authority to not renew. You still have to go through the due process that we're, we're talking about. But the authority is there if there's an establishment that should not have their license renewed.
And the legality is in proving that and everything are the, what we're fighting against already?
I believe so. Can you, can you clarify that last?
I guess what I'm saying is, is that if, if that's the situation, we already would have used that method to get rid of the, the bad apples, that, that we've worked so hard to weed out, yeah. So it's obviously not the easiest way to weed them out.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion before us is to strike item eight-two. Any additional comments or questions? We have exhausted comments and questions on the side of the dais. Any others? Okay, then will the clerk please call the roll as to whether or not item eight-two should be stricken from the proposed ordinance? Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, item eight-two is stricken from the ordinance before us, which brings us back to the full ordinance before us. Is there any discussion regarding the ordinance now with that modification? Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Just to clarify, is, by just striking that and leaving it as currently written with only one, it will follow the normal transfer process that's in place for everything else? I just wanna clarify that, 'cause I, I, automatic revocation, I'm fine with that. If there's bad apples, we can do anything sooner. I understand there's a judicial process everybody's entitled to. I just wanna make sure, like, I don't think we have to add something here. Just that it follows the same process as everything else.
So you would have to add if you want to determine if a business in good standing is the only grandfather G C license that would be eligible for, for transfer. If you do nothing and accept the ordinance as-is, then you are not eliminating the ability for any gaming cafe to transfer their G C license if they've been grandfathered in as of, as of today.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Budmats?
Then therefore it could be transferred to a different location within Rolling Meadows as well, right?
It would, it would follow the, the liquor process, the current liquor code process. So this is eliminating the, the cutoff of essentially the, the elimination of G C licenses by attrition, which was what the council had expressed at the last committee of the whole. So at this point, any of the grandfathered-in G C license holders can sell a business and transfer that license. However, it would still require approval from the council and it would require approval from the liquor commissioner. That's how that process currently stands. Alderman McHale, well, Alderman O'Brien, did you?
Well, I was just, I think that's a fair point, Alderman Budmats, bringing up. I'm comfortable the way we can write in and that it's at the same location. I mean, even if we wanna put that restriction on it, if that's something that's amenable to my peers, I don't have a problem even taking that additional step, because as we talked about last week too, the worry about expanding is now in the updated policies for G As. There has to be, I think it's five or six tables for every one machine. That's not just possible. As the operators have said, and I think we've been in the other cafes, that's probably just not possible based on spacing. So I'm completely fine if in the updated wording, we could limit it to any gaming cafe grandfathered in as of 2024 has the ability to transfer the license pending the same location and their normal approval process. I don't have a problem restricting to certain locations.
Okay. Alderman McHale, I'm gonna have you respond and then, and then we will determine where we head next. Go ahead.
I would agree with, it would have to be the same location, but also if we put in some sort of wording that the business has to be in good standing, therefore they get the privilege of selling their business.
Okay. So what I'm gonna propose this, this evening is that since we're at first reading right now, let's have city staff and conduct a legal review as well as to what the intent of the council would look like written in code to make sure that we're compliant and providing for due process for any transfer as well. So with that said, I'm not gonna ask for any additional amendments or specific language this evening, because I think that we wanna have city staff and our city attorney review that language. So with that freedom, is there anyone else who has a comment regarding this ordinance that they would like to see when we revisit this ordinance for second reading? Yes, Alderman Budmats?
I, I understand what you're trying to accomplish with the, with the addendum, but I think that what we should just do is come back with this rewritten and vote on it without an addendum, because it's gonna be very difficult to accomplish with an addendum. Let's just have something that's written the way we're looking to get it done and, and, and make sure that the licensee that's getting sold, the licenser who's selling does not have prior violations that the, so that, that we've, we've very carefully crafted the, the fact that which organizations are gonna be sold, 'cause otherwise we might have another one that's getting sold here in six months rather than just closed. And so, I, I'd, I'd rather see us very carefully write this so that if you have outstanding violations or you've had excessive amounts of appearances before the liquor commissioner, all kinds of different things. So rather than work through what we've already passed as an, as an, as an addendum to something that we're gonna basically table, why don't we just scrap it and come back with a fresh ordinance next, next meeting?
Okay. And just to clarify, I will be looking for the council to vote to move this to second reading and not to table it, since we won't be reconvening until the eighteenth of June. If, and if Alderman Budmats, if you're not in favor of that, then we would look for a motion to table. Pardon me, a motion to postpone and then for that specific date. We can always, we can always postpone again at the June eighteenth if the language isn't there.
Let's postpone this to June eighteenth. Does that give the staff enough time to rewrite this? Does that give the staff enough time to rewrite this?
Well, as is, if we if we pass, if this passes right now for first reading, it will still come back with those changes because we can, we have direction for staff to provide that. If we, if this does not pass as is, then it's it's dead.
Okay.
Okay. So then we're looking for a vote to move this ordinance forward for second reading as amended with item eight two removed. Will the clerk please call the roll? Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance does move forward for second reading and then staff has direction to address the items discussed from council. Very good. So this brings us now to item G, ordinance number 24 dash 00, to approve a special use permit for a major change to the marketplace of Rolling Meadows Plan Development to authorize the Pacifica on Golf redevelopment, 1460, 1470 Gulf Road, in for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinance be, oh, we don't have a consent. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Need a motion first and then we'll talk about it. Thank you. Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll? McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance does move forward for second reading. For item E, staff has asked for a waiver of first reading so that this can be approved immediately. Is there an older person willing to make a motion for the first reading of ordinance E?
Somewhat.
Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, then for item E, ordinance number 24 dash 30, to extend the grace period for 2024 rental license renewals, the question is, shall this ordinance have its first, its first reading wavered? Will the clerk please call the roll? Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. This brings us to new business on item H, which is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for May 28, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This now brings us to our consent resolutions, which consists of five items, items I through M. Does any older person wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for resolutions? All right, seeing none, the chair declares in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Kohler for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Item I, resolution number 24 dash R dash 55, to approve the retention of closed session minutes and recordings. Item J, resolution number 24 dash R dash 56, to amend the 2024 City Council and Committee of the Whole meeting dates for June, July, and August. Item K, resolution number 24 dash R dash 57, to award a professional engineering contract for full-time construction engineering and related engineering services for the Park Street Storm project, phase two, in a not-to-exceed amount of $77,770 and no sense. Item L, resolution number 24 dash R dash 58, to award a contract for construction services for Park Street Storm sewer improvements, phase two, to swallow Construction Corporation in amount of $807,663 and 80 cents. And resolution, item M, resolution number 24 dash R dash 59, to authorize the award of a contract to preform traffic control systems for annual pavement paint stripping services in a not-to-exceed amount of $55,000 and no sense. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings the council to other business and reports. There are no mayoral appointments or proclamations and no clerk report. Do we have our community items of interest? We do. And to that, I will defer to our city manager, Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's summer kickoff celebration, the annual block party, will happen on Friday, June 7th from 5:30 to 9:30 P. M. We are thrilled to welcome our headliner, Modern Day Romeos, with Mr. Myers opening the show. Shop exciting market vendors and feast from a variety of delicious food options. Check out the cool law enforcement vehicle show, city trucks, a canine demo, kitty train face painter, balloon artists, and more. Visit the city's website and Facebook page for more information about this event. Road and pedestrian improvements are planned in the near future for Central Road between Weber Drive and Route 53, and we're asking for public feedback. Attend a public information meeting scheduled Thursday, June 6th from 5:00 to 7:00 P. M. at City Hall, 3600 Kirchhoff Road, to learn more about this future project and to share input on road and pedestrian improvements along this important corridor. For more information, please visit the city's website at cityrm.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will also defer to Finance Director Molly Talkington regarding some exciting news for our popular annual financial reporting.
Thank you, Mayor. The city did once again receive our popular annual financial report award through the Government Finance Officers Association. This is one of the three awards that the city typically receives from G F O A, including the one for the annual audit and for our annual budget. So it's just very exciting that we've received the award again, and this document, out of all three, is the one geared towards the average, everyday reader, less technical language and more focused on trying to make it understandable for the everyday user. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Speaking of financial reporting, the financial report for the April 2024 is in the agenda packet. And if council has any questions, please contact Finance Director Molly Talkington. For our June 18, 2024 Committee of the Whole draft agenda, we will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council approved this evening, we are moving to a summer schedule beginning in June. So the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to note for members of the public, will be held on June 18th at 6:30 P. M., immediately before our regular city council meeting to be held following the completion of the Committee of the Whole. The draft agenda for that Committee of the Whole meeting is in the packet. There's one item scheduled at this time, which is an update on utilities projects, which is in alignment with our budgeting processes we look into 2025. This is a draft agenda and is subject to be updated. We will be posting agendas a couple weeks in advance in an attempt to keep everybody updated on what is coming down the pipeline on the single meeting to occur each month. And so we will post a draft agenda. It will be marked draft. Once it is finalized, it will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act without that draft language on there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will turn it right back to City Manager Rob Sabo regarding the city council draft agenda as well.
Thank you. So as mentioned, immediately following the Committee of the Whole, we have the time noticed on our agenda at 7:00 P. M., but it may be a little bit later than that in case the Committee of the Whole meeting does run over. There are a few items on here just to note. We are, once again, the recipients of the Goldwater Ambassador Award, so we will have representatives here at the at our council meeting to present that award to us. In addition, we are going to be receiving a presentation of the city's actuaries related specifically to police and fire pensions, as well as a presentation of the 2023 audit results. The agenda draft itself includes a few additional items, which we will be updating based on the city council's direction related to gaming. So there is an item on here that has been postponed. We will further postpone that in order to allow for the conclusion of the considerations that are currently pending related to G A liquor licenses. And then in addition, there's four items under resolutions, including approval of a approval of engineering for upgrades to the Quentin Pump House to provide additional pressures to the west side of our community's water system, approval of design engineering for lift station three located within the west side of our community, approval of El Gonquin Parkway Design Engineering, and lastly, approving manhole rehabilitation program. Once again, as noted, we will try to post this agenda in advance of that meeting date so that members of the public have an opportunity to see what's coming down the pipeline on that agenda. And once we post it in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the draft will be, the draft watermark will be removed from that agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, are there any matters on the agenda that the council would wish to discuss? Seeing none, just looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.